Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks Council. It's Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, six o'clock. If we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Allianz?
Here.
Councilmember Lutal?
Here.
Councilmember Gessel?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Here.
If we can have Councilmember Elliot, U.S.C. Honor, and then he's in fact more. Sit down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the invitation by our very own Reverend Val Hellem of the Delray Oaks Christian Church.
Almighty God, thank you so much for representing the government. Thank you for those who are willing to serve the people, both for those who have served for many years and those who have served a shorter time. We pray that you will bless this meeting. May it be characterized by wisdom and mutual respect and make good decisions you make for the people of this city. And thank you for your presence with us. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a swearing in of one of our U.S.T. officers. However, if you present a uniform, staffs, uniforms may come in at times, and we wonder again for the best uniforms. So we're delaying this until our next meeting, so we won't have a swearing in this evening. So next we have a staff report, city manager's report, person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city engineer and I met to establish the timeline for our spring street project, which will be our next capital improvement project. Construction will start on or about April eighth, twenty nineteen, on the cul-de-sacs along Portola and Quendale, as well as Carlton and Sessido. The estimated cost for this project will be one point one million dollars funded through Measure-X loan from Tamsi and Cavus Revenant. Staff attended a meeting of county and city managers and homeless service providers to discuss the disposition of approximately ten million dollars in homeless emergency aid program heat funds specifically and regional approach to homeless issues more broadly. The Coalition for Homeless Service Providers will prepare an application for these heat funds. It is potentially possible that the Veterans Transition Center or the Community Human Services could be the recipients of part of that heat funding. Public Works conducted fuel reduction along General Jim Moore this week to reduce fire danger even though it's late in the season. First rain flowed through our creeks and storm drains without issue thanks to the Public Works clearing the creek and the storm drains over the past month. David Kimble and members of the Citizens in Action Group, church volunteers, and city staff worked on the Rosita Triangle earlier this month, and it was a great day of volunteerism focused on beautifying our community. David Kimble also worked with an Eagle Scout to continue the beautification of Rosita Triangle by replacing three benches there in the triangle. Public Works delivered woodchips that were spread by volunteers, and the five oak trees are taking hold there that were donated by Mr. Moore there. Chief Point attended the Citizens in Action Group meeting. PD will deliver Santa to Old Town Hall on December ninth. Officer Michelle Ball started this week, and we forward the herbeding ceremony next month. Our police department continues to integrate into the peninsula and add value, making this all safer. Our officers were part of a prevent task force response to a robbery Thursday morning several weeks ago on Fremont Street where a handgun was stolen from a gun shop. Due to the rapid and professional responses of our officers in particular in that investigation, the suspect was apprehended safely at ten thirty P.M. that night. Our independent attorneys completed their work with our staff on the F.Y. seventeen-eighteen audit, and we expect the final report to be presented to council at the January meeting. And finally, a bit of housekeeping for December. Our normally scheduled meeting in December is on Christmas Day, so the meeting will be held on December eighteenth to see the new council. And city offices will be closed Christmas week, December twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, and December thirty-first to January first.
Thank you. Good report. What's your comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Monterey Regional Waste Management District successfully completed a bond issue, as I previously informed people. The good news mostly were double A minus bond rating, which is extraordinary, and we're very excited about that. It's a very low interest rate, somewhere between three and four percent. I can't remember exactly what it was. That's a thirty-year loan, and as reported before, that's to pay for improvements to the landfill. There's about a six-million-dollar budget to do the next layer of the landfill, and that period will be filled in. We still have over a hundred years of permitted capacity in that landfill. It's an extremely well-run organization, as evidenced by the double A rating that was achieved. I think it will serve all of us for quite some time to come, and serve us very long. Last night, I attended my final Monterey One Water meeting. I'd like to report that the Pure Art Project is still very much on track. Looks like there's going to be, what do they call it? There's going to be some preliminary testing of equipment, starting up next month. And that is a huge project that'll be going on continuously. There'll be, as things come online, you'll have to run tests and those things. But the project expects to be completed by no later than mid-June and fully operational sometime in July or August, producing about thirty-five hundred eight-foot feet of water, pure water, every year for our communities. I think I'll take time to lay it right if I can, Mr. Mayor, to tell me how much I appreciate being a member of the council.
Say that again, Mr. Mayor. Well, we do it next week. Next week. You'll be in the council also. Feel like you keep coming back and forth here.
It's me and him, it's cool.
Okay. And that's thank you for your great report, you, Councilmember Lutal.
I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I did, and I hope yours was as nice as mine. I attended the Seaside Sanitation Board meeting. Correspondence was presented on the Fats Oil and Grease Program, R.R. to the various restaurants in the city of Seaside. The focus of the meeting was really honoring Delfrugio, who had served on the board for Seaside Sanitation for seven years, because that was his final meeting before retirement. Community Human Services. It was reported that the donations are looking very good. The board approved the mine angel of it as presented. And the board also approved funding for the budget shortfall and allowing the staff to use property of Bain Street and Salinas should that property become available. There was an excellent presentation on the Daisy Program. The Daisy Program is a drug and alcohol therapy intervention service for the youth. I attended the Delray Oaks Citizen in Action Group, where we made final plans for the Santa's workshop, which will, as the city manager said, on December ninth. And it will be from two P.M. to four P.M., and Santa will arrive at two thirty. So prior to the arrival, though, there's lots of crafts and cookie decorating and Christmas ornament making, and lots of elves and young folks, very helpful children, enjoy the day. And I hope you're all there and take pictures with Santa Claus, with yourself or your children, your grandchildren, whatever. I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We got to the MST. We received a presentation from the Veterans Transition Center for the operations stand down. It was a huge success, and if anybody is interested, it's every other year, it's unfortunate it's every other year, because it shouldn't be every year. These veterans need all the help they can get. I was happy to see my own dentist was there performing dental treatment for some of these veterans, and MST helped transport these veterans because they came from Northern California. It was a big effort to get the buses all coordinated to get these folks down here for this event. And so it was a very successful event, and when you hear about it next year, think about volunteering or talking to somebody that you know can help, whether it's dentistry or medicine or whatever it is. These veterans need our help, and it's a very good cause.
Thank you, person. Councilmember Gessel?
Oh, boy.
Good report. Okay. For me, very, very quick, this Thanksgiving holiday period according to Christmas as such, most of the committees are winding down near the end of the year. That's just the nature of things. Only thing of note is, within the next couple of weeks, four will meet. The staff and attorneys right now are meeting to determine which of four legal alternatives are best for the transition for us. They're going to have a matrix showing all four alternatives, advantages, disadvantages, and discuss that and come up with hopefully some sort of decision as to what happens over the next year and three quarters before it sunsets in June of twenty-twenty. So that's basically it. End of my report. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. What can I? Please. I meant to say, looking over and seeing you, remind me, we were at the Monterey Airport District, special meeting on district. And we got a presentation there, a very detailed presentation by the airport district staff on their preferred alternative, as defined in the environmental impact report, which I know many of you in this room at least looked at, heard of. It's a huge report, hard to read through those things. And I think the airport staff very clearly heard that we had an issue with their proposed road, their preferred alternative number one, and the proposed road to Delray Oaks. It was very clearly stated by both councilmembers, Gessel and myself. And I do believe they did pass that. I didn't stick around for both, but they did pass that. So that's their preferred plan. And that's not the end of it by any means. As I've tried to communicate through social media, the airport plan is the airport's plan, it's not Delray Oaks' plan. But we should at least be good neighbors and listen to what it is that they're proposing and see, understand thoroughly what the implications are for us. We also very firmly understood that if there's not something that's acceptable to the citizens of Delray Oaks, that we are not going to do anything to change what we already have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, next, Reverend. Senator General, any member of the council who should pull any items for question discussion? Senator, not the Republican, member of the public who should pull any items for question discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
City councilmembers, good evening.
Okay, wait, something. Do you want to pull something?
This is?
What do you perceive you want to pull?
Consent on C-two and C-three.
Okay, C-two, C-three. Just hold on two seconds, please.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the public who should pull any items? Okay, let's bring us back to council. I'm gonna make a motion to approve all of items that we've sent in general, the exception of C-two and C-three.
Go ahead.
We have a motion, we have a second. All the favorites here, everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's unanimously. Okay, now, now, for C-two, C-three, please. State your questions, comments, or whatever.
I think you all know who I am, Brian Bartich. And I have some comments. Okay, first of all, I want to thank the council staff for the time they put in on the council and the sacrifices they made to get the wheels working today. But I also have not a lot of things to say. I got the shock of my life the other day that I found out Mayor Evelyn is putting rules in place so soon after the election. The mayor always talked with council members to appoint more decisions. I don't know why it's so important to have a majority under council members' agreement when ignoring is done without reading the rules. Mayor Evelyn was appointed and had never had any opposition. The council of Delray Oaks did not like the direction, the citizens, I'm sorry, the citizens of Delray Oaks did not like the direction the city was going. So they voted together, got together, and supported Allison Kerr for council, which she overwhelmed and defund. Allison Kerr is our first female mayor, and now it's the time to act like adults, leave pettiness behind, so Mayor Letker, with the help of the council, can work peacefully and with no obstruction for the betterment of the city. That's my comments.
Any other comments with regard to the items C-two and C-three?
Good evening. Jim Clark, Delray Oaks. After getting exposed to the emotional outbursts that had stirred up by the mayor elected our last meeting, I began to wonder if there was something in two ninety-five that I missed in my first reading of it. I had to ask myself, what would make them all sound me along over this very basic and straightforward ordinance? So giving them the benefit of the doubt, I reread the ordinance. And after doing so, I can only come to the conclusion that, A, they hadn't actually read it themselves, or B, there is some extreme, underhanded, backroom Jane Parker, Ford Old Wild, and all the cost deal going on in the background without being very transparent. So as I said, I actually read it again, all the one and one-third pages, seven sections of it. And after doing so, I still support your passage of two ninety-five. As I understand it, and by the way, I confirmed my facts by calling City Hall ahead of time before I go public about them. Here's how it works. The mayor makes a motion for one of the five to sit on the Tamsi board, for example, and two of the other four need to agree with the mayor on that person taking that responsibility. If they don't come to agreement, then any member of this city council can make a motion for councilperson B to sit on the Tamsi board, for example, and again must be approved by two more of the council. So the mayor has the first kiss on selecting people and simply needs to get consensus agreement from two other councilmembers. I mean, if the current mayor could accomplish that, then surely someone who ran on the slogan of "We can do better" ought to be able to get three or four more to agree with her. As the ordinance states, it is not a change from the practice of the current city council. There were other accusations, Mayor, of hamstring, taking away power, crippling the mayor-elect. Well, this isn't a monarchy. It's a democracy where we build consensus. I support the passage of two ninety-five. And there are some that are claiming this is bad optics. Well, good for you, because you are doing this regardless of the bad optics, which means to me, you're not doing this for political reasons. Thank God for that. I support the passage of two ninety-five. The only other reason the mayor-elect might be shook up by not being able to assign boards to people unilaterally came to light in an interview recently, where she said she has no intention of giving her a full-time job and expects the rest of the city councilmembers to step up and take on more boards. She's the mayor-elect. She needs to be part of the team and commit to working with them and doing the job, not handing off the people to do. And therefore, I support the passage of two ninety-five. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Any other speakers with regard to these two items on the agenda?
Hi, my name's Mark Thomas. I'm from Baxter Place, Delray Oaks. And I am hoping that based on the outcome of last council's emergency meeting, that you were able to see that the community is behind some transparency, and not just pulling the wool over our eyes and trying to pass something last minute. I did some research, I wrote some names to call, and I heard something said in the last city council meeting that I was like, wow, that's kind of harsh, laying it back. And then I was like, oh, wait, I've heard that about the Republican, not sad, but the other part. And they're trying to pass something up, and they're calling them a laying back because they're trying to do it before they all of a sudden they change hands. And I was like, let me do some research on it. Okay, they weren't just calling it back names, they were just actually using a little statement. So it made sense, because that's what this seems like this is right now. Mayor, I appreciate everything you've done. You've done some great things. You've put Delray Oaks in black. You've got some great programs. Our police is doing wonderful. Our streets are being fixed. Things are happening. That is fantastic. I am not taking anything away from that. For the rest of the council, you guys are dedicating so much of your time. I am sacrificing my one and a half hours on every other Tuesday to come down here and complain. You guys are doing so much more. I appreciate that. But what you're not taking into consideration is that everyone else is here trying to tell you the same thing. We all see what's going on. You've run this council fantastically for the last nine-plus years. Let someone else have a chance to do it the way that you have your chance of doing it. And for the rest of the councilmembers, thank you for your service. Continue your hard work, but please listen to what we're trying to say. We're a small committee. We want to keep it that way. We want you guys to be able to understand what we have to say, and that's all we're trying to say to you. We're not trying to tell you how you've done. We're trying to tell you this is what we would like to see, you know? And while you are supposed to be a representative of other people, we would like to see that, because that's not something we see in the city. Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Any other speakers on this item?
Hi, my name is Teresa Alia, and I'm from Los Encino, Thrive. And all I want to say is, I'm not a poll of them. I con that, and I do agree with two ninety-five. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Who I want? Okay, public comment period's closed. Back to the council, if anything, a motion?
All the motions have been approved. What's the number?
C-two, C-three.
Seven, C-two, and?
Three.
My second.
Your motion, the second, any discussion in the motion? Yes.
I just want to comment on a couple of the statements that were made there. Look, you know, the timing might seem off to people, but the fact of the matter is, this is exactly what's written in this ordinance. It's exactly what we have been doing since Jerry became mayor. There is no difference here. This clarifies a very poorly written ordinance, a code, not part of our code, and that's what this is for. I voted against two ninety-five last night, and I'm voting for it this time.
Any other discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Saying not, all the favorites here, everybody saying aye?
Aye.
My improves. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Appreciate it. Old business, none, new business. This is one of the better jobs we have as a member of the council. We've got four outstanding individuals that have put their names in the hat, the volunteer work, paying a planning commissioner. They're all highly qualified, they're all dedicated, they're willing to sacrifice their time and effort on behalf of the city for no pay whatsoever. At the end of this year, we'll give them a thousand percent pay increase. That's just the way it is. So I mean, everybody up here, I think, the majority of started in the planning commission work going up, and the planning commission deserves a lot, but we don't want to invest in the planning commissions right now, whatever we have in history of the city. What we'll do, what we'll do is, I will ask each of the four candidates to come up and speak for up to three minutes, explaining why they should be the one selected. They'll all make a stand up there. If there are any questions about members of the council, we'll make the decision. We'll ask the questions if we have any. Then the second person will get up, third person, fourth person. When that's done, I'll ask the public comment. If you'd like to speak on being out of any one of the four candidates, if you got up, their reasons why they're the best candidate, whatever, you'll have that opportunity for three minutes at the end, and we'll come back to the council, we'll discuss if we need to discuss, and we'll go ahead and vote. And one of the most votes wins, and you'll be the one, the first among the four outstanding individuals, and will be serving on the planning commission for the next two years or so. So what we'll do is go in order of the packet. Mr. Connor Richardson, if you'd take the podium please, and you've got three minutes to explain why you should be the one to be selected, please.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, my name is Stu, this Connor Richardson, and first I would like to thank you for entertaining my application this year. While I have absolutely no doubt that my fellow applicants are capable of performing the tasks of with this role, I believe that my unit has certain attributes which will make me particularly effective for this position. First, I have a legacy with this community. I was born in this city, and it has been my permanent home for the past twenty-six years. Growing up here, I volunteered for the city council distributing flyers for public events, and during this time, I've come to completely love its natural beauty and the applicable quality of its residents. As such, I would be highly invested in ensuring that every recommendation made by the planning commission, which did help my family put an addition on their house in their swamp, would be always in the interest of supporting the community as a whole. Second, I'm highly educated and specialized in disseminating information with a master's degree, fully out of custom, going through vast amounts of data, seeking out additional information where necessary, and in short deadlines, being able to use context to formulate reasonable conclusions. As the joke goes, once someone tells you they have a master's degree, you're used to working in panic mode for the rest of your life. But in addition to this, I've also learned to orient myself specifically to a given matter at hand. I don't necessarily need to think of stuff as a lawyer, as I've been trying to, I don't know, as a contractor, out of near work habit. And that allows me to focus specifically on a matter at hand and focus on the facts of the case. And thirdly, I also have a must-eben that I have personal ambitions toward improved politics. And this position would appear to be an ideal opportunity for me to gain firsthand experience in how local governments and related institutions function. Being able to familiarize my people with these erupions of local bodies such as this would doubtlessly provide me with much needed experience and maybe a difference in people's lives later on in my career. And so, conclusion, my ambition drives me to learn how to sell. There's no information I can't get through, no skill set that I can't master, and my personal connection to this community further drives me to ensure that my service to the city will benefit everyone who comes to it. I thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I hope you have all a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, sir. Any questions about members of the council?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for applying, Tom. Can you articulate for me how you will remain open-minded and unbiased as you go through your duties as a council, a commission member?
Well, in terms of remaining unbiased, it particularly has to deal with, sorry for making reference to legal terms, but always relying on the facts of the case, because I certainly don't have any enemies in this community, but at the same time, as long as I believe that what the information that is put towards me is sound and the reasoning is logical, I don't see a reason why I wouldn't want to have bias for or against anyone in particular, because if something is self-evidently a bad idea, it's no amount of bias that can cover up the fact that it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Any other questions about members of the council? Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. General Hane Hellick.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. City councilmembers, members of our local governments, citizens, and neighbors of Delray Oaks. My name is Jeremy Alak. I've decided to have been in our city for six years. I absolutely love and appreciate our community here. It's quiet streets along which there's a strong presence of neighborly bond, friendship, mutual respect, beautiful natural surrounding resources, parks and all. Sense of safety and security instilled in us by our pleasantly interactive local police force, our very inviting, receptive, and positively responsive city officials and workers, all reasons for which I find myself steeped in contentment, assurance, comfort, and appreciation here. And accordingly, I find within me a strong desire to be a positive contributor to the maintenance and perpetuation of the wonderful quality of life as we as a community enjoy it. It is with such motivation that I am seeking appointment to the city of Delray Oaks Planning Commission. I am currently and actively licensed by the California Contractor State License Board and recognized by the Department of Consumer Affairs in good standing as a Class G general building contractor. I am a sole proprietor and operator of my own construction company, which I operate here based in Delray Oaks. I possess over eighteen years of experience in residential and commercial construction, building and design, urban development, and project management. I'm well versed in the requirements, regulatory processes, and statutes of the California Environmental Environmental Quality Act. I have a passion for architectural design, particularly in consideration of its cohesiveness and aesthetic harmony shared with its existing forms and natural surroundings. As our good city grows, and area, population, features, and facility, there are and will continue to be proposals and projects that certainly require dedicated, responsible, mindful, informed, foresighted, and highly scrutinizing members of our society to collectively make sound decisions, reflecting in positive progress in accordance with our city's general plan, our natural environments, and most importantly, the standards of quality of life which our community enjoys today and for future generations to come. I'm absolutely confident that based on my appropriate knowledge and experience, my love of community, and a strong sense of responsibility and civil commitment, that I would be a positively reliable member of the city of Del Rayoques Planning Commission. And my sincere thanks to all of you for hearing me this evening and your consideration for my application for appointment.
Thanks, sir. Any questions?
I'd like to state the same question to you that I did to the previous candidate. I want to put a little context on this. I apologize for not putting that out to you. As a member of the planning commission, you're to be asked to look at designs that you might personally find offensive, you might personally find strange. And so that was the source of my question, and I thought you gave a very good answer to the keeping an open mind, looking at everything without your biases on, and trying to see the merits of the project.
I don't believe there's any room for such bias, and that in my opinion, all the valuable matters very little because decisions made will be for the benefit of the greater whole, and that should be a common and positive idea that I would strive to work towards.
Any other questions about members of the council? Saying not, thank you, sir. Is it Denise Wood?
Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm Denise Wood. I live on Rosita. Been there for ten years. Me, my husband, my two kids, my dog, Jackson, my cat, Momma. So I've been really involved with the community over the years. So for five or six years, I was on the action group. Three of those years I served as president, working on all the events. And I also spearheaded a couple of projects, replanting just outside of Old Town Hall, and also the, the, it's right up here in City Hall. Had a great time with that. And we're still involved. My kids are going to be working in the sand and shop. So let me give you a little bit of my background. So I'm born and raised San Jose. Graduated Southern State, moved here about eighteen years ago to the Monterey Peninsula. I spent ten years in working in project management, and then I had kids and a career change. And now I work in landscape design, built for, over in Carmel. And very small. And it's all the facets of the company I've helped with, designing overseas staff, build plans for the John Good City, and anything else that needs to be done to source companies. So I have a lot of experience looking over contracts and looking at design things, and that's something that, that my background allows. And I have to say, in the ten years that we've been in our house now, we've done some things. A massive retaining wall, built some curbless, and also we replaced, oh, and installed some solar panels. And actually, this is a shout-out to Kevin Karen. Thank you very much for the easy access. He made it really easy to do those projects. And even our solar installer was saying, this is a great city to work in, and he wants to do some work here. So that's really nice. And my brother-in-law, Anatomi, he was saying, you're tired. What do you plan on doing? So I'm staying here. I love this place. This is where we don't kind of do it. If you like to find dog around the front lawn, you can walk around the city streets. We're safe. This is a wonderful place. It has a great location, and there's a lot of potential here. And I think, my background and my commitment to the community, I think I can help out the planning commission. And everyone will feel a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't you have any questions?
Yes, I do. You probably know it.
So bias, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's non-good design. I mean, or that's something you don't agree with, but there's always a way to make it work. No matter what, no matter what it is, it seems like there's compromise, and you talk about it, you go back and forth, and, you know, make, and you've got to contest. It's a compromise sometimes. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. And last but not least, this is Debbie Blaisley.
My name is Debbie Blaisley, and this is Mayor, City Council members. I'm here to be considered, or to consider me, to fill the vacancy on this planning commission. I have been a resident of Del Rayoques for just a little over eight years, and like speakers, both of them have fallen in love, or whatever, they've fallen in love and love at this community. It's, you know, just being able to walk the streets, meet your neighbors, talk with your neighbors, it just has a great deal to it. I'd like a chance to serve my community in this position. I know a lot of growth is coming to Del Rayoques and our neighboring cities. And I have had a chance, like some of the others have, to serve the city. I've done some other volunteering in the county, milled on wheels. I was a coster for the juvenile courts right after I retired. But I haven't done anything specific in Del Rayoques. This would give me the opportunity to be a voice in the decision-making process that affects our community through the planning process that the commission goes through, local government, and land use that people bring to the planning mission. I know that I would be expected to have knowledge of the local ordinances and issues as residents come with their requests. One of the things that I know when you're working with a small group or large group, a lot of patience, a lot of fairness are expected, good analytical skills, especially when people come with their plans and concerns, and as you mentioned, Dennis, maybe sometimes you don't necessarily agree with it, but you've got to give them the respect to, you know, give their side of what they want to do, and just listen to it and converse with your other commission members. I think patience and analytical skills are something that I've come by through a thirty-three year career with UPS, and just some of the things you have to deal with with a very diverse workforce, a very highly labor-oriented workforce. I know that I won't have any problems working with fellow commission members. I've got good listening skills, fairly good communication skills, of which I've been known by through that career with UPS and some of my volunteer activities. Consider myself open-minded, flexible, and willing to learn what it takes to be successful as a planning commission. Thanks for your time tonight. And I'll take the same question, I guess, unless I'm, well, if you repeat it for me.
Well, I think you just answered it, actually. You said you'd be open-minded, and you take into consideration the desires of the person. That's what I heard.
Well, I personally believe that everyone brings bias to them, just personal bias. But when you come together with a group and you take that commitment to listen to what everyone has to share, that that openness comes into place, and you set your bias aside, and you discuss whatever the resident is bringing to the council, whether it's, you know, remodel, or solar panels, and then you decide as a group, because if you can't reach a consensus as a group, then what's the purpose of being non-commission? Thank you. Thank you for talking.
Any other questions about members of the council? Saying not. Okay, now it's open for public comment on any members of the, that are applying to the, the planning commission. If you'd like to speak on anybody at the app, please, now's your chance. Anybody should make any testimony?
Good evening. George, you guys, I'm the chair of the planning commission. I want to thank all the applicants. I don't think we've ever had this many concerned citizens, so I appreciate you guys applying. I do find out that it's very difficult when somebody spends half a billion dollars more and more on a piece of property, and we have the right to tell them what they can and can't do. It's really a tough job. We rely on city ordinances, codes, and so forth. So it's, it's a tough position to be in, believe it or not. So I just want to thank everybody, and if you, we only have one opening, so three of you, hopefully one of you will be picked, but if you don't make it, please reapply, because it shows your concern, and you want to continue. I know people applied and didn't make it, and they'll apply again, so it showed that they just weren't that interested, so. Thank you again, applicants.
Mr. Jack Shaw's comments show why he keeps this here in the planning commission. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, I'm Dela Chikin, and I've been here many times before over the same issue. Behind my house, let's start on the twenty-fifth, about three fifteen in the morning, car races down the street.
Yes, public comment period. This is about, this is about the four folks here. This is the floor. If you have comments about anyone on the floor who are running for the planning commission, public comment period comes next after the talk.
Okay, all right.
Any other member here wishing to give a comment, which is like any of our former candidates for the planning commission? Saying not, public comment period. For that, issue's closed. Back to the council, any comments? Any last minute? Yes. Thank you.
I want to echo George's comments. I was thinking back, George, and I can remember times when we had one applicant for a planning commission, and every one of you has an outstanding resume and made eloquent speeches about wanting to participate, it's all the attributes that I hope everybody has that works on the planning commission. I was a planning commissioner for six years. It was a great way to get to know something about how city politics works and what the rules are and how we do business. So I applaud everybody that applied tonight, and unfortunately, I'm not getting one of you. Every one of you, in my mind, is highly qualified to fulfill the commission seat. Any other?
I agree with both George and Dennis. I also started off on the planning commission, and it was a great experience, and we learned a lot about the city and procedures, and it was, it was fun. It's one that I've got.
Public comment.
Well, I too agree that we have outstanding applicants to, unfortunately, we don't have enough of them. But like Jerry said, I hope you do come back for future vacancies, because you all seem to be very well qualified. And thank you for all the time.
I too started on this planning commission a number of years ago, and it really opened my eyes to balancing what people want and need, not necessarily the same thing, and with the requirements under, around the strict state and local rules, as well as just the architectural design and engineering capabilities, and making people compromise, not making people, asking people, helping people compromise. It was very enlightening and enjoyable time about something, and I encouraged everybody, if there's any other thing within the city, please consider applying. It's a great learning experience.
I filed, started on the planning commission, well, alumni, I should say. I'll do what everybody said. It's a tough job, there's a lot of regulations, it's not easy, takes a lot of time. I learned under Mr. Jack Shaw. Every time somebody puts forth something they want to do, these planning commissions go out, they take a look at what's going, and then just sit here and look at the blueprints. They go around and talk to neighbors, do whatever they possibly can to understand what's going on, give them a fairer decision. The good news is we're going to select one tonight. The bad news is there are three others that aren't being selected, and I also recommend that if three aren't selected, please reapply in the future. Strong resume, appreciate your willingness to serve the city, as well as the volunteers we have. So with that, everybody fill out your ballot, mark one name, fold it, and then your clerk
I have four votes for Jeremy, excuse me, and one for Denise Wood. So Jeremy, you've got it.
Congratulations to Mr. Halleck. He will be sworn in. Let's have a hand for Mr. Halleck. You'll be sworn in our next city councilman. It'll be a genized, and the official will bring your family, and they can watch you be sworn in very quick. So again, thank you, and thank the other three outstanding folks. That's right. I know some of the other members on that ran, and if we're not selected, it does not negate the, the, you know, God, you've done this in your own years sometimes. So again, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a public comment period. Every member of the public has a right to speak for the council. Any item not out of the agenda, you've got three minutes. Please state your name and address, just for the record. Please.
I'm Dela Rayoques. I know you guys, that's the four things I'm making use of on my belt. I know that. And I'm only using it on my belt every time I have a complaint. So on the twenty-fifth, about three, three, three fifteen, thirty, behind my house on Pumas, the traffic, the up and down ways in two cars, one in two stop signs, and the last car was a red one. I know that. But, you know, it's just something what has to be taken care of, because it does affect the Del Rayoques citizen who are bordering Pumas. And it's not just mine, me. It's affecting all of them. And then this morning, about six fifteen, a gentleman appeared from behind my fence, on my fence behind the utility shed, with a woad, with a, they're giving that, a big stick, and stumbled on the, not just the walkways, he walked in the middle of the street, and he was just almost falling over. So that's a concern for us also. You know, I don't know how many times I have to complain about those issues. I just wish something, or nothing, you should do it alone, but it also sees as a responsibility. And I've been talking to them also. So I just think if the two cities get together and come up with a compromise, you know, you patrol the early, I patrol the night, or something has to be done. So, and that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carl Sonora, Harvard Place, eighteen-year resident here in Del Rayoques, and my comments are directed to Mayor and Dennis. And I just want to thank you for your years of volunteer. Thank this whole council as well, and for everyone who applied for the planning commission and who have successfully, I don't know, planning commissioned and will contribute. So I'm easy to, and he's my career. Sorry for my informal wear. I'm on my way to, one of my side jobs is I volunteer as a martial arts instructor. I'm on my way over there to American College. But one of the things that we teach our kids there are integrity, focus, perseverance, and keep a positive attitude. And that's something I see with you two gentlemen, and I want to thank you for that, and this whole council as well. You know, I haven't always agreed with everything that you say or do at a macro level, but I do know that here in Del Rayoques, you've always acted in our best interests, and the proof is in the pudding, as they say, we have some great things we're gonna have to get. Thank you for your volunteerism, and thank you for everything you've done. Good luck. Good luck.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Last time I stood up here, I wanted to suggest, oh, sorry, that's familiar. Last time I stood up here, I suggested that you have the street supercome later. Next time I notice the street super is coming at me, I'm confident, I just want to say, well done.
Again, I want to make it official, I'll say this offline, but thank you, Dennis and Jerry. It's been a pleasure on the planning commission. Had a great time and I greatly appreciate you guys continuing up and going on the council. You did a great job. I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have one more.
Come by at the apple.
Well, I just want to thank the police department. I bought him this morning in my cul-de-sac and I really appreciate it.
Any other comments by members of the public? Saying none, public commentary. One more. Sorry.
My name is Ruth Ann Currents, and I live on Carlton Street in Pride, wherever you call it. And the gentleman there with his ride, with the planning commission, he had said something that I disagree with, but I'm really glad that you voted him in. And we had other contestants, but I think he fit the picture. But he had mentioned that we have quiet streets, one thing that is incorrect. And I live on Carlton and I'm really disgusted with the speeding traffic. Now, you have a sign that says slow down, or where it says. When people buzz up Carlton, I watch them. They slow down at the sign. And one of the reasons I think they go so fast is they have no respect that we're a community. And the other thing is you've narrowed our streets so narrow that there are no cars on the other side. So you have no cars parked with their speeding that they could hit. There's nobody that's going to be passing from those cars over to the other street side. But I tell you, I'm really, really disgusted. And most of them are pickups. There, and some go left in Delray Oaks, some go to the estates and some go straight ahead in Seaside. Now, today I watched a big, huge distributing truck, probably going to Seaside, going really fast up our street. Now, I hope that this coming year, you take an interest and you solve this problem because because we're a community, we have no right to be treated like a busy highway. And I hope you understand that. Make sure I got everything clear. Well, I think I've said everything I want to say and I thank you for listening, but my bottom line is I want to address next year because I pay my taxes and I live on that street and I do not appreciate the speeding cars. Most of them, like I say, are pickups. They are regular distributing trucks and it's unfair for us to be on that street and put up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the council? I don't have the agenda. Saying none, public comment period is closed. Next we want to be going into a closed session as promoted by Governor Code, section 54956, except the council may adjourn to a closed session to consider specific matters dealing with certain locations, personnel or legal real property negotiations. The topics we will have will be the public employee performance evaluation, city manager as per Governor Code, section 54957. Before we go into the closed session, does any member of the public wish to add, to give any public comment with regard to the item that we've been discussing in closed session? That is the city manager evaluation. Anybody wishing to say anything? Yes, sir.
Out of a five-star rating system, six.
That was pretty succinct. Good. Anybody else wishing to say anything? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is David McKenzie, sixteenth House City. My question is, is the evaluation available to the public?
This is not a question. You don't ask questions during this time. The evaluation.
Okay, and I would like to see the evaluation made public.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much. The, oh, I'm sorry. Return side.
Just like my wife ignoring you. I heard a six, you know, I heard a seven.
We have a seven. Anybody have an eight? Anybody else having a public comment with regard to the item? Saying none, the public comment period on the closed session items is closed. We will be adjourning now in open session, recombating closed session once the council table is cleared. Thank you very much for showing up. Great meeting. Thank you. We're done. Okay, we are back. We're out. We've adjourned in closed session. We're now reconvening in open session. Our city manager will now report out. Our city attorney. He used to be the city manager. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During closed session, a performance evaluation was had with participation of the city manager and discussion regarding an amendment to the city manager's agreement was had, which will be discussed in open session.
I would entertain a motion to direct the mayor that's made to execute an amendment to the city manager's employment contract in effect that $12,000 increase in the city manager's compensation to be paid monthly in the amount to be paid to his existing 457 account, which is not, or not personal.
Subsequent.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion of a motion? The same, the same city public count? Okay.
This is adding twelve.
You're right. Any public comment?
Should have gotten more. Deserved more.
Okay, back to the dais. Any other discussion of the motion? Saying none, all the favors, I'm going to say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, you are adjourned.